It's way bigger.
And the big screen, but whatever.
It's pretty crazy.
And I wonder why, and I wonder why.
People are selling their single family rentals to owners and getting a ten thirty one.
Or just nobody's risking capital.
All right, we are now recording and I hereby open the Planning Commission work session in its role as Committee for Citizen Involvement. Sandy, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure, Chair Salazar, I'll start with you.
President.
Vice Chair Rhodes, I.
Here.
Commissioner Buck is excused. Commissioner Thompson is also excused today. Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
And Commissioner Stout.
Here.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone, for joining us and thanks, Sandy, for taking the role. We have one item on our agenda for today, and that is the annual report for the community or the Committee for Citizen Involvement from Sandy. Take it away, Sandy.
Thank you. So each year, we take the opportunity to summarize the outreach that we have done for the various projects we have. Focused on long range planning, although for the past couple of years, we've added some housing information on our housing programs. And reflect on what we've done, what worked well, lessons learned. So the Planning Commission has, one of your roles is as the Committee for Citizen Involvement, and is that, as you know, you review all of our community engagement plans. If we have advisory committees for projects, you would often appoint those advisory committee members. So this is an important role to ensure that we're getting communities input at the appropriate times in the planning process, so that when we go to adopt something, it will be have been vetted to an extent so that we know what the issues may be and hopefully have been able to resolve those, or at least, depending on the situation of the state mandates, at least be able to explain why we're doing something to people. And hopefully it also helps make for better legislative outcomes. As well as, in some case, we were focused on the legislative in terms of like our plans and codes, but there are also, of course, quasi judicial decisions that you make after public hearings, but this session tonight is really more on the long range land use planning. So we have a couple of staff here with me, in addition to our Assistant City Attorney Christina Kraz. But we have Haley Campbell, who's Senior Planner, and she has been managing the Stormwater Code Amendments. Hi Haley. And then we have Chelsea Hartman, who has been managing the comprehensive plan map updates. So the three of us, and we might be joined by some other staff later, but at least the three of us are here to be able to answer questions or participate in discussions with you about your perspective on what's worked and help set us up for the engagement that we would do for projects next year. So this report is something that we would also then share with City Council. So I want to give the Planning Commission and your role as the Committee for Citizen Involvement an opportunity to make some observations or discuss if there's changes you would want to make before we would share this with council later this year as a communication packet memo. And I see we do have someone on the phone, and I believe that would be Monica Sather. Is that correct, Monica? You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, I'm a comprehensive land use planner with the city, and I've worked on a couple of the projects mentioned in the packet this evening.
Great, thanks, and I'm going to see if I can rename you Monica, so people know who you are. So that we see you as a Springfield sound. Okay.
And I apologize, I'm not sure how to mute, so I don't mind being muted as well, thank you.
I'll mute you if it seems like we need to, and then I think if you hit, I'm not sure how, I guess, raise your hand by using star nine if you want to say something, and then I'll unmute you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I don't have a real formal presentation beyond what I've just said. I think the overall theme that as a staff we've identified, which is nothing new, but it's to really, given our limited resource and also just limited capacity of some people to engage in everything, you know, you don't have time to pay attention to everything that's going on in your community. So be strategic in when and how we outreach to people. Make sure that we're choosing the methods and the resource level that's most appropriate for the input that we want to get. So that's, I think, a consistent theme that is something not new, but it was reinforced again this year in terms of the outreach that we did, and I see Katie Carroll is also joining us. She's another staff person. She works as our Housing Analyst, and so she can speak to some of the outreach that we have done on housing, if you have questions about that. So at this point, Chair Salazar, I'll just open it up for you to lead a discussion with the Commission as the Committee for Citizen Involvement on what we've presented. If there's questions or if we want to look at anything more closely. Turn it over to you.
Thanks, Sandy, and definitely, yeah, thanks to you and all the staff who worked on that report. I think it was great, very succinct, and I especially appreciated just the really honest look at what worked and what didn't work in the past year and being able to present that. So thank you and presenting that so clearly. So thanks for putting that together. It was a really helpful report to see, and it was really helpful for just reminding us the work that we've done over the past year. We've covered a lot of ground. I guess, like Sandy said, we don't have a formal agenda. Happy to take any questions or concerns about specific items that were covered in the last year or just kind of approaches to gaining citizen involvement in general, but really, and just how we approach community engagement in general. I noticed that in the report, just one message that was really hammered home is we really have to be strategic about staff time and staff resources. There isn't enough capacity to respond to every question that comes in, especially around a very controversial issue. So how do we get the information out there? So that it hits more people? How do we have specific talking points if you get the same question over and over and over again, just having right language that can be shared with folks? So appreciated that as a point. I think to kick it off, one thing that I appreciate, I know, I think that I've mentioned this before, I think that Springfield, Oregon Speaks is a great resource for finding items and for, I think it's a lot more intuitive than the city's website, for example, especially in relation to specific items, meetings that are coming up, materials related to those meetings. I think it's really helpful for folks, for the general public, to have access to all the records related to a single meeting in that meeting site on Springfield, Oregon Speaks. I would love to see that become more of a one stop shop for people's resources. I would love to see, you don't really know to get to Springfield, Oregon Speaks unless you're looking for a specific meeting. I'd love to see if there's a way to get a button that just links directly to Springfield, Oregon Speaks on the city's main page that you can just go to that resource, because it's a great resource for not only the Planning Commission, but a lot of other a lot of other commissions, like the Historic Commission. So I'd love to see us use that. I know not everyone loves Springfield, Oregon Speaks, and there is a learning curve with it, but personally, I find it really helpful. I find it really intuitive. And I know that if we're putting information already there, it just makes sense to get the information out to folks that way. And and I wonder, I know that it's that website is run by a separate developer, a third party developer. I wonder if there's a way to have some sort of search function so that it'd be possible to search for previous meetings if you, if you, right now, it's kind of hard to find a meeting unless you remember exactly which date it was. If you're looking for a meeting on a specific topic that was, say, six months ago, it's kind of hard to find on Springfield, Oregon Speaks. So that's just one item to mention about that. I've gone on specifically about Springfield, Oregon Speaks a lot. So I'll leave it up to any other comments from staff about the usefulness of Springfield, Oregon Speaks, if you've heard from community members about how easy or not it is to use for specific agenda items, and also happy to field questions or thoughts from other Planning Commission members.
So I'll respond first, and that is that we've been told that we should start using another platforms, Zen City for our projects. We'll still use Springfield, Oregon Speaks for all of our meetings. But I'm not, because we, as you know, we started for the code updates, we started putting the project information on Springfield, Oregon Speaks directly rather than having all of that on a webpage. So some of the projects that we've had started for a while, they all have a webpage on our website. For our development code update, we have a page, but then the more detailed documents and such are now all shown as projects on Springfield, Oregon Speaks. So I think based on the direction from the City Manager's Office, we're going to probably stop putting project information on Springfield, Oregon Speaks, because there's this desire to try Zen City. So we'll see how that goes. But the search function is something we can look into. One nice thing with Springfield, Oregon Speaks, the vendor's name is People Speak. And we have really easy access to the developers, and we have regular meetings with staff from People Speak. So we have been helping to shape it as it's been coming out in terms of like being able to have projects posted on Springfield, Oregon Speaks, so we can talk to them about the idea of a search function, and they can let us know how easy that will be. We have a meeting first week of November, so we can bring it up then.
Great, that's great to hear, and I think, yeah, I know, I was very, very pro Springfield, Oregon Speaks, and I'm sure if there's direction to move to a different platform, such as Zoom City, I don't know anything about that platform. I didn't know anything about People Speak before we started using it. So I'm sure there's good reasons, maybe it is a more intuitive platform for the public to access. But whatever, whatever platform we're using, I think we should have more, I would advocate for easier access just from the main city website landing page rather than like specific projects, just to really show that it is a one stop shop for information that you're looking for.
And actually, on the Planning Commission page, under meet, see the agenda, there is a link to Springfield, Oregon Speaks, but we could make a much more visible one.
Yeah, I think if you go to, if you go to the main webpage, I don't think you can get there, right? Yeah, and but depending what's going to happen with that.
Well, I think we'll still have a website. I mean, we'll still have a website, and I'm not sure how this Zen City is going to integrate. I think you would go to a city's webpage, and then that would take you to Zen City to a page there. So we'll see. The Wastewater Master Plan will be the first project that we use using Zen City, so once that's up and rolling, we'll be able to share that with you and see how it works, because we haven't tried it yet.
So Chair Salazar, so is your, what you're saying about Springfield, Oregon Speaks, is it because it helps you separate the various documents and helps you manage the documents, or is there something else?
I think what I find helpful about it is, yeah, the specifically document retrieval, if somebody has a question about a specific action item that we've taken on as council, I mean, this is for that we've taken on as commission. That's for Planning Commission meetings, but also just if there's a specific project we've worked on, I find it helpful as a, yeah, like I said, a one stop shop for all the documents related to that. So all the attachments are there. You don't have to go searching, they're already organized for you, and staff is already putting in that time to organize those files in a way that's easy to access and easy to see. So because of that, I think it's just a great thing to to, yeah, keep on spreading the word on. It's like we've gone through this, all the documents are right here. If you have a question about a specific action or a specific project, that you can see all those documents right here in this, this meeting that is specifically scheduled to address that project. Yeah, go ahead.
So let me ask, in terms of the new platform, I just, I guess my thinking is, is that, first of all, community engagement is not huge, right? I mean, it's tough to get people to engage on things. Is that, is that fair to say? Or, I mean, there's going to be a small subset of folks that pay a lot of attention, but beyond that, it's tough to get folks involved.
Nineteen out of twenty times, right? And then there's the one thing that everybody gets hot about.
Right, yeah, the roundabouts, yeah. So I guess my question is, or I guess point of view is, is maybe a for those things, a, some background and synopsis in terms of why are we here, what are we doing, you know, where did we come from? But also more, most important, keep it simple and stupid. It's got to be concise, you know, you want people to look at it and go, okay, is this something I'd be interested in? I don't want them to have to open, you know, a fifteen page document and then try to figure out whether it's something they would want to be interested in. So that's just my two cents worth, yeah.
Commissioner Stout?
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. When the city receives a development application, is there ever like, like, you know, somebody wants to lease a building downtown, and it's going to be a, I don't know, an Applebee's? Is there ever a press release that goes out? And the reason I ask the question is, I used to subscribe to the Registered Guard back when it was, you know, a Eugene based paper. And one of the things that's always behind a paywall is the same article, which is, but I've done a dozen different times, which is, hey, want to find out what's going into the old West Ele- or Seven Eleven that was at the bottom of the Washington Jefferson Street Bridge? People, for some reason, want to know what's happening. What's the new store? What's the other, other thing in there? So I'm just curious, because the Registered Guard seems to think that that's actually valuable content to have behind a paywall. Is that something that we're doing to really publicize that? Because I know I see Eugene articles all the time, but not necessarily Springfield articles all the time, just in terms of an additional avenue for triggering public engagement. Thank you.
No, we don't do press releases for development applications. For those that are going to require public notice or a public hearing, we'll do a legal ad. So those are published in the Chronicle, but we don't do press releases on development activities as far as I can remember having done that. Maybe, maybe if it's a real significant project, but not like an Applebee's.
I think it will be hard as the city to pick and choose what was significant enough to publish in a press release. And if you publish everything, they'd see what we see, which is such a laundry list that nobody would read it.
I mean, I think it's worth exploring. And we can bring the idea up to our communications staff. I mean, I don't know that in terms of what would pique interest and how would they choose what to post, like on social media, for example, even if it's not in the newspaper. It's a good question.
Commissioner Stout, so you're kind of looking for a hook to get people involved? Is that kind of where you're trying to go?
That's essentially it. I mean, obviously, there's maybe a dozen different applications, maybe two of them are interesting. You know, maybe, hey, there's a new place for you to get ice cream downtown. Hey, Gateway is getting a, you know, a Chick-fil-A or something like that. These are intrinsically interesting to me, especially when some businesses go out of business, and I'd kind of leave it to the various news groups, whether it's Eugene Weekly, whether it's, you know, the Registered Guard or the Chronicle, to kind of pick and choose what they would actually publicize. But in a sense, yeah, I'm just curious if that avenue has been explored to e-engage the, the average citizen. Obviously, those who are paying attention to the the real estate, the legal ads are like real estate brokers and a few developers. But beyond that, if we're trying to get, engage additional feedback, I don't want to create any additional work for city staff, but just to make sure that the folks that, like, whether it's Chronicle or otherwise, are getting regular updates as well on every single application, so they can choose. No sense in us choosing for them, if they're like, oh, well, this new zoning change is significant here. I'm happy to have some informal chats with, whether it's the Chronicle or anybody at the Guard or anybody even at the Weekly, although I don't think they want to even talk to me there.
Sandy, I wonder if you could preview any items in the next, in the coming months or even in the next calendar year, in which you will explicitly expect to need input from us as the Committee for Citizen Engagement.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we're hoping that we will continue to do some development code updates. Let me back up a bit first. So I'll be going to council in November to discuss a work program for comprehensive planning, given changes in the state requirements. How we have been planning to lay out our work over the coming years has changed. And so I need to update the council and confirm with them what they want us working on, given these changes. So, but what we're thinking, we're going, so that what I'm saying is subject to change. But what we think we're going to be able to do is continue to work on our development code update. So we'll start. We've completed two out of the three phases for that, and the third faces, third phase is the everything else phase. The first one, having been focused on housing, and the second one on employment lands, so the residential, commercial, industrial type zoning. So the everything else phase, we're going to break down into smaller chunks and probably do smaller packages rather than put a big package of all the other amendments together to process at one time. So there'll be, how do we engage the public on these code amendments, some of which are complying with state mandates? So there's not a lot of really discretion in terms of how we change our code. But then there will be some others that will involve more discretion. So we're looking at doing complying with the bills around housing that came out this year, changing some of our annexation language and looking at land divisions and mixed use zones. So those are some examples of the type of development code amendments we'll be starting to work on. And then probably the project with the biggest community involvement that would be needed is for our climate friendly areas. So we'll be designated climate friendly areas as required by the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities rules. And those climate friendly areas will be high intensity mixed use areas supported by high quality transit and other transportation networks. So we'll need to designate those, picking out which areas of the city will be these climate friendly areas in 2024, and then adopting the plans and codes to implement that to make those a reality. So I see us engaging a fair amount on that, and we'll need to focus on any potential displacement issues as part of that engagement. So those are the two main ones. We have ongoing projects of the, that we already have plans for. The Natural Resources Study, which has been very slowly plodding along. Our, I mentioned earlier, our wastewater management plan, I mean, sorry, wastewater master plan. Our Public Facilities and Services Plan that is joint with Eugene will probably come to you for adoption early next year. And then Willamalane's master plan, or comprehensive plan, will need to be adopted as an element of our comprehensive plan. And you, for those who've been on the Commission for a while, got some updates from Willamalane as they were doing their comprehensive plan, they did a lot of outreach through that process. So the adoption, I don't think there'll be a lot of focus on that, because it was putting the plan into place, but now it's to make it adopted as a land use element of our comprehensive plan. So staff, anything else I forgot that you want to bring up? Not seeing anybody. Okay. Yeah, listen, okay. Does that help give you an idea of what's coming? So the two things that we'll be looking at, putting a plan together for how we engage people are the code and the climate friendly areas.
Yeah, I think that's really helpful, and especially like in context of like, I think there's engagement that certainly can be done on a like project by project level that we've been kind of talking about so far. But also just really when reminding the committee that when we're looped in as a Committee for Citizen Involvement, it's on these overarching issues that aren't kind of lot by lot, but, but more, or property by property, they're more citywide rules, ordinances, plans that are being shifted and some, and all things that are going to impact a lot of people by definition and projects that we want to really get the word out on so that people understand how the, how these decisions will impact their properties, how they will impact the ability to develop on those properties as well. I think one, just one thought I have is that I know that as we, knowing that kind of that one of the items that we'll be prepping for in the future to continue to talk about is the adoption of the climate friendly and equitable communities rules. We've addressed some of those rules up to this point and haven't gotten a ton of, of public engagement around that in our meetings specifically. But as these rules begin to be adopted and implemented, if they are, then there will be a lot more attention on that and just planning for that and knowing that, that they are. It is kind, it is a wonky set of rules and a wonky process, and it's very administrative and, and can be confusing for the average citizen. So just, I think the, the staff has done a great job about engagement so far and education to the community so far around our position in those rules and how we're adopting them. But I guess the more of those rules get to become implemented, the more attention will be on them and the more engagement we may get. So just planning for that and trying to make those. the more attention will be on them and the more engagement we may get. So I'm just planning for that and trying to make those, they're they're wonky and they're confusing. And I think, again, staff has done a great job of distilling those to their 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 most comprehensible pieces, but still just continuing to focus in that direction. Vice Chair Rodstine?
So thinking about what Chariselle's are just said about these CFAC things and and as they get implemented, the meetings that we've had about those implementations will be pretty old. And and I think that you're right, that you're going to have a higher-than-average number of citizens calling the city or getting onto the website or something and saying, wait, what? And and these decisions are going to be, their discussions are going to be old. I mean, I haven't really been able to make any decisions. So is there a way that we could kind of create like a little guide of the YouTube's of these meetings? Maybe of both the Planning Commission and Council? And say, you know, here's a list of CFAC discussions that you, as a concerned citizen, can look back and see have been happening over the last year. And it might, it might save some staff time if people were able to just look through all of that and see us all saying fifty times, well, there's not really anything we can do about this before they call in.
But we don't, other than the parking changes, we don't have anything on our website or any, or Springfield, Oregon speaks pertaining to CFAC. And that's been intentional because it's like, well, what would we say? But I think you're right, both the, both of you commissioners, that as we move further into implementation of these rules beyond just the parking components, as we're getting into the climate-friendly areas, the scenario planning, and then further on into the transportation stuff. We should probably create a landing area for climate-friendly and equitable communities. And we could, I think that's an interesting idea, have links to these different meeting videos of where these have been discussed or links to the packet information so that somebody could if they're wanting to know what's been discussed, have a guide to that. As well as as Commissioner Schmuck was saying, provide some pretty user-friendly background purpose and some concise explanation without getting into all of the wonkiness as Commissioner Salazar aspects of the rules. So it's something that, well, Molly Markarian, who's not with us this evening, but she's managing the climate-friendly area work. So something we can think about as we start to get ready for that is, are we going to put that on its own or in the broader context of CFAC? And how are we going to present that? So I think that's good timely thoughts about how are we going to like start explaining all of CFAC? Or are we just going to still do do it more piecemeal as we roll it out to the community?
Also, so I'm curious about I guess the emphasis and describing why we're doing that. First of all, it's a, it's not a law, right? It's a governor's, governor. Rules. So it's not, it's not gone through the legislature, right? So but we're treating it as though it's a law.
Still mandatory.
Well, okay. So then the question I have is what of climate-friendly, equitable communities is, what's the reason for doing it? Is it to identify populations that we that we want to be in it or that we think we're going to serve? Is it to, or is it, is it a livability thing? In other words, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that there's a lot of reference to skin color and sexual orientation that seems to me could be put aside and not even referred to because it doesn't isn't germane to, I think, what's trying to be done, which is the livability aspect. So I guess I'm trying, I'm interested in how we're going forward with this. What's that team going to stress the reason for it? What are they going to tell the public? Here's why we're doing this. Because the public's going to say, well, what are you doing that for? Isn't everything okay? Seems to me that the the reason for it is important, at least from my perspective.
I think that from our city's perspective, that's that's exactly, the question that you're saying people are going to ask is exactly why I thought we should lump this all into one landing page. To answer at the very top of the page, the state's making us do this. The answer to why are you doing this is because we don't have a choice. So if you want to talk to somebody about it, talk to them, not not us. Really? I mean.
Yeah, I, you know, I I I get what you're saying, and I know that's often the reason, but it seems to me that it should be pushed back. This is not right. Some of this is just not right. It's Okay, but I'm just saying, you don't, I mean, what do you get? What's the state going to do? Sue you over it? I mean, if if you're if you're achieving the goal that they want, maybe you don't use their prescriptions, but you achieve the goal that they're going for. They're not gonna, they're not gonna be, I I they can't be too picky about it. And I I guess I'd like some feedback. Am I, am I, am I on the wrong track here? Am I misinterpreting what this is?
I'm going to jump in here for a moment. Christina Kraus, Assistant City Attorney. So the approach that we're taking to appeal the rules and continue to advocate very strongly with the legislature, the governor's office, through the League of Oregon Cities and through our litigation coalition. Our approach is consistent with the approach of every other city appealing these rules currently. We don't, I don't have it recommended to the council, and the council didn't provide any direction not to comply with the requirements of the law. We are complying with, and and administrative rules are law. They have the effect of law. And the one of the concerns is that the hammers that have been written into these rules, if we did not comply with them or meet the requirements could be extreme for the city potentially. And at least theoretically could involve the loss of millions of dollars of federal infrastructure funding that the city council has not provided us direction to kind of take that path. So we are pushing on every avenue that we can to advocate to policymakers throughout the state that these rules are not working, are not going to work, aren't going to achieve the outcomes that they're intended to achieve, and that it would be better to do as you've described, which is give cities the overall objectives we're trying to meet and then rely on local policymakers and decision-makers to determine the specific means rather than having prescriptive rules. We haven't made a lot of traction on that yet. The litigation is still ongoing. The Court of Appeals hasn't ruled. And we, I mean, it's just impossible to know when they will rule, but they heard the case in July. So that's where we're at now. We're taking actions, you know, as directed by the city council. And I am confident that we are consistent with the way that every other jurisdiction that's joined us in the appeal is right now handling compliance while also challenging the legality of the rules.
I think that's a really helpful context, Christina. Thank you. And for that reason, I think, yeah, I think it is tough to think about having one specific landing page for for CFAC itself, rather than kind of the piecemeal approach up to this point. Because I think when people think about it, so we've got the new, the new parking rules going into effect January first, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember correctly. And I think it's helpful when 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 those go into effect, somebody's going to be asking about parking. And if they go and search for that question about parking and they find a website that says, here's these parking rules and guess what else is coming, may be coming down the line? That's maybe would cause undue stress. And if somebody has, I could see the value in in continuing to this piecemeal approach, especially as we don't know the result of this litigation yet. Just having a landing page for parking now, if we end up losing the litigation and we know that all these rules are going to go into effect, then maybe then it's it's a good idea to start thinking about educating the 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 public on the other and other portions of CFAC that will be coming into effect in time.
Well, you're giving us some good things to think about and you'll certainly be talking about all of this bit with climate-friendly areas and CFAC as we bring you the next engagement plan for the climate-friendly areas. So you can continue to mull that over and maybe by then we'll have had a ruling from the Court of Appeals. But we'll think about that and kind of how how do we present this and kind of how broad of a package would we have information for people?
So, I'm sorry, so one other thing, in terms of achieving the goal, so and so there's a sorry, the team doing a housing inventory? Is that, is that being actively done or is that a wish thing or it's kind of extremely difficult to do an inventory of, you know, what we have in Springfield? Is that, or has that been done?
That's Katie.
So when we do our housing needs analysis, it won't be as we've done it in the past, where in the past, we've looked at the inventory of housing that we have. And we'll look at the population projection that Portland State provides to us and demographics of our community and including like affordability and identify what housing types we need and what quantities for the next twenty years and then associate those with zoning districts. So what's changed this year with House Bill 2001 that was passed in this year, 2023, is that instead of us doing that work, the state is going to tell us how many people in different income categories and housing types we are going to need to plan for. And so the methodology has changed. And that's why we're going to have to delay our housing work because they're not going to have those numbers for us until January of 2025. So we cannot do our housing needs analysis until they give us basically what we're, how many people and housing types and affordability levels we're going to have to plan for.
When did that become the case? Because I either misunderstood or that's changed recently.
It changed this year, House Bill 2001. So it's a few years ago, I'd have, I'm thinking maybe four years ago, the legislature passed a bill and I don't remember the name of it in which they asked to look at regional housing needs and that was like a test run of this new methodology. They hired Echo Northwest to do that statewide to develop this new methodology and identify projected numbers for each city. But that was not mandatory. It was just a test. So what they've done now, Katie's telling me it was in 2019, so four years ago, yep. That they're making that new methodology mandatory and it's going to be state-driven to tell us who we need to be planning for in terms of like households and income and housing types instead of us figuring it out.
Commissioner Stout, I think I saw your hand first and then Commissioner Schmuck after.
Well, I I'm curious, Sandy, on this topic, have you, as a staff, done any kind of math on the back of a napkin, like, you know, average household income is still only about fifty thousand, average cost of a house is still about five hundred thousand and how that doesn't really work well for, you know, moving people into housing. Have you guys done anything you know, kind of in a draft format that might even be close to what the future, future mandates will bring?
No, I mean, I I guess we haven't done that, but as you say, I mean, we know the trends are not in the right direction. I mean, and that's been true for quite a number of decades where housing prices are increasing faster than income levels, and that's both for purchase prices and rents. So it's, things are not been moving in the right direction. And that's why, in part, we have such a housing crisis now is because both the undersupply of housing units, where we haven't been building as many housing units as we need to match the households we have. And then the affordability part of it, that it's becoming more and more expensive. And so that cost burden has been increasing for people to be able to afford housing. I'm speaking generally, but I mean, that's been the trend. So thus here we are. And what do we do about it?
So, so if I may. So, so this new rule is prescriptive. In other words, they're going to tell us that we have to have a certain amount of housing that's priced at this price point, price point, if you will.
Is it the price point or is it like by square footage and bedroom, bathroom, that kind of thing?
Well, I mean, there's a correlation there, but it's, it's going to be interesting because of course the city doesn't build housing. We don't control the prices. So within the tools that we have, which are land use and then some other kind of incentive programs, we're to try to encourage production of housing at these different income levels of different types. And there is an accountability aspect to this as well, where if communities are not producing the housing that were needed, we'll be in, the state will come and help us produce that housing, will be on this accountability kind of highly produced type thing. So it's, it's a changing world for planning and I don't know how all it, how all of it will work, but I mean, we have had a lot more housing produced over the past two years. And we're getting a little more diversity in the housing types that we're getting built in Springfield. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
We were. I don't know what, how many, you know, housing starts are going to be happening now, like with rates like we were talking about.
Right. I mean, it's not, you know, housing is not just Springfield. It's, there's a lot more factors affecting this that are, some are national, some are local, some are regional. So we're doing our planning within this broader context that we don't have control over.
So what would that look like if the state said you're not doing a good enough job, we're going to come in and help you. What does that look like? Is that financial support? Is that penalizing us? Do you have any feeling for what that might be or?
So they're going to be undertaking a rulemaking process to get into details on that. So the the legislation has passed, House Bill 2001, but it's, DLCD is now tasked to do rulemaking on buildable lands inventory, housing needs analysis, housing accountability measures. So we don't know yet what that will all look like. And they've, they've been given deadlines to produce these rules and have them in place. Twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
We probably won't be the recipients of their but they probably will be across the freeway.
Do you think so?
Oh, I I'd put money on that.
Chair Salazar, if I may?
Yeah, Commissioner Stout?
I I just, I think there's a neat opportunity as a city and as a commission. If we, Bill Clinton always, his campaign was, it's the economy, stupid, right? When he was running for president, I think there's an opportunity to look at all of these, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, all these rules. And really say, look, this is just a means to try and create more housing affordability so that more people can participate in the American dream, if you want to call it that, or just simply more people can afford their own home. And if we just look at it that way. And if we just look at it that way, I feel like that might be a good filter for everything, just like this is just trying to increase the housing affordability for, for everyone in Springfield and make Springfield a better place to live. It's not that hard, some people love it, some people hate it. But it's sort of immaterial if we're not just providing for people's basic needs and allowing people to continue to have a great place to live, so that's all.
Yeah, bringing the conversation back to the realm a little bit. Speaking to our engagement and community, I think really appreciate the way that staff has really worded and engaged with the community on really sensitive issues, the ways that those issues have been presented, the ways that, that community members are engaged with by individual staff when individual questions come in. So definitely trust staff to be able to handle these sensitive topics and sensitive conversations in a way that is both engaging and educational for the public.
So do you want me to add to this some of the points from your discussion today before sending it on to council? I could either add a section like planning commission observations or recommendations or some such, or I could add it into this listing of considerations going forward. Some, some of the main themes that I've written down were about Springfield Oregon Speaks being a great resource. And I could add a little bit more of what you were saying about that to Commissioner Salazar. That we need to make sure that when we have a project, some of what Commissioner Schmunk was saying about the background purpose and some real concise information upfront before we get into any of the media documents so people can at least engage that, gauge their interest on the topic. This idea of somehow communicating development activity to the media so that maybe that will be a way to generate interest. And then CFAC rules and having some kind of a strategy around how we're producing those. So those are the four themes I had written down out of your discussion. Maybe I've missed some, but would you want any of those included in this report?
I think that's helpful to provide to council.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed.
And I think you could do it however you think is best, as far as the organization of your document.
Okay. So how about if I propose I'll write something up? And maybe send out that section to you all individually and then you could edit it if you felt you needed to just, and then send me an email back on it, not copying everybody, just to make sure that I've captured your points and that you all agree with them coming from you. I mean, if we needed to talk about it again, we have time, we can talk about it at another meeting. But I'm thinking we could do it that way and incorporate your, your themes there.
Yeah, I think that's a great approach, I think especially in thinking about communicating around climate friendly and equitable communities rules. Obviously, council will provide you the direction on how to communicate that. I think we've given you a good diversity of opinions on kind of what might be helpful for the public to hear and and we, and feel free to forward that to, to council specifically as well. All right, excellent. Well, we have about, if there are any, if there aren't any other questions or comments around this community engagement, we have about five minutes before our, we reconvene as the planning commission in our regular session. And we can, I'm, I'd propose that we take a short break and come back at 7:00 PM. All right, thank you everyone. I hereby close the community committee for citizen involvement work session.
You not want to pause it?
Yeah, actually, right.
Hello everyone and welcome to the planning commission regular session. I now open the planning commission regular session. Sandy, do we need a second?
No, it's all the same people.
Okay, great. All right, Vice Chair Rhodessey will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the
The flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands.
All right, thank you. Next we'll move to approval of previous meeting minutes. I'll go through one meeting at a time and we'll see if there are any edits that need to be made. The first are the minutes for June 21st, 2023, are there any edits? All right, seeing none, the meetings for June 21st, 2023 are now approved. Now we'll move on to the meeting minutes for August 15th, 2023, any edits? All right, August 15th, 2023 minutes are now approved. And finally, our minutes for the September 5th, 2023 meeting, are there any edits? All right, and finally, the September 5th, 2023 minutes are approved. Next, we move on to business from the audience. If you'd like to speak and you're joining us on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're joining us by the phone, please press star nine. All right, we'll have a chance for anyone who likes, who would wish to give business from the audience, anyone who'd like to give comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to council action. This is our first meeting in several weeks, so any meeting minutes from September or October that need to be, or not meeting minutes, but reports on council action? Commissioner Schmunk?
So I've got September 18th, both work session and a council meeting. There's discussion in the work session regarding Anne's Heart funding. It's about $600,000 funding request for Anne's Heart Women's Shelter. The funding was contingent on acceptable operations plan. City staff felt the plan was incomplete and not sustainable. Council, well, this is my interpretation, but council was disappointed that the proposal could not be accepted and was and they reluctantly directed funds to be redirected to another project to support long-term affordable housing. And then for the council meeting, the meeting included annex resolution related to stormwater retention and ordinance related to municipal code and approval of the museum committee amended bylaws. Public hearing included considerable public input on Anne's Heart. Folks wanted to talk about that in the council meeting. And then there was other discussion related to a liquor license application. The council ratified the contract to Springfield Police Association and an employment agreement for a short-term judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmunk. Any other reports on council action? Commissioner Stoudt?
For October 2nd, there was, in the work session, there was an interesting discussion about precise zoning, I forget the exact term, the employment zoning for Atcor over in Glenwood. And the council generally directed folks to take the, the least resource intensive method possible in order to both preserve the employer that is Atcor, they're a pipe company. But there's, there's a dozen things that need to happen on the, on the legal and the administrative level to get all of the zoning just right so that, for them to continue their work there. That was the work session. And the more, more hotly interesting topic was an additional annexation by the city of Springfield near Linda Lane. And a number of citizens raised their concerns over the annexation. While there could be additional development, it's right near Mount Vernon Cemetery. While there could be additional development over there, the primary reason for the annexation is actually so that it would be easier to fulfill both storm and sewer for the city of Springfield to take care of those aspects rather than actually building additional housing units and also taking over valuable weapons property. So that was the general gist of it. It was not, it's, in a sense, the citizens' concerns were certainly warranted and there is a possibility of future developments. But the near term is simply, let's make sure that we're taking care of our storm and sewer infrastructure through a zoning or through a, like, the word's not escaping me, acquisition.
Annexation.
Annexation, thank you. That's that.
Thank you, Commissioner Stoudt. Any other reports on council, council actions? I know I had, I'm scheduled to have watched yesterday's meeting. I caught the regular session but missed the work session, so I'll report on that in our next meeting. All right, moving on to business from the planning commission, do any planning commissioners have any business? Vice Chair Rhodessey?
Yeah, so I attended a two-day class about land use planning that was held in Woodburn, let's say like two weekends ago. And there were a lot of, a lot of interesting points. The first day was geared more toward city staffs and the second day was geared more toward commissioners. I think the, to me, the most interesting overarching theme of both days, the two guys who were teaching the classes kept coming back to this idea that when the Oregon land use planning system was developed, the idea was that we were going to concentrate development inside their growth boundaries. And I think that what I'm used to thinking about that has, is a way to preserve farm and forest land outside urban growth boundaries. But they kept hammering on this point that that county building departments should probably be saying no to a lot of things, but that city building departments should be mostly saying yes to things because we actually want this development to be inside the cities. So, you know, unless there's a really good reason, we need to say yes. And a lot of our land use planning is done in advance. So there's really not a lot of reason to say no to a lot of things because a lot of the hurdles are supposed to have already been removed for that land inside the urban growth boundaries. So, super interesting class, if you guys have the opportunity to take that at some point.
Thank you, that is an interesting perspective. Yeah, thanks for reporting back on that. All right, any other business from planning commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to business from development and public works department. Sandy, before you kick off, I was wondering if you could give us an update on, I know since our last meeting, we, the deadline closed for the, for interested folks to apply for the open planning commissioner spot. And just wondering what, how many applications came in and what interest there was in the position?
Sure, so we had three applicants for the position, one of whom said that the planning commission was the first priority. And that person is actually here with us today, Bruce Weber. So my understanding is that this time around, council will be interviewing applicants who, for the positions for which they chose first, because this time there was a, you could put for second, third for different committees, being a batch recruitment that could be considered for different ones. So the council will start doing interviews next week for some of the committees and will be interviewing the different applicants based on their priorities for the committees or commissions.
Excellent, thank you. Any other business you have, Sandy?
So we do have a meeting scheduled for November 7th. We'll have both the work session and a regular session. During work session, you will be learning about the capital improvement program. So our new city engineer will be coming with our community development director to share that with you. They put this capital improvement plan together every two years as to how the city will prioritize investments in our infrastructure. And then for the regular session, there will be a public hearing on a plan amendment zone change. So you'll be making a recommendation on that for the council's consideration. So lots coming for you on November 7th. I don't yet know if we'll have another meeting in November or not. So keep that date open for now, that's November 21st. And then we will have a meeting on December 5th as well. So for sure, November 7th and December 5th and maybe November 21st.
All right, Sandy, thanks, we'll keep us posted. All right, any other business? All right, seeing none, we can, we will now adjourn the planning commission regular session. Thanks everyone and have a great week and see you in November.